United Republic, which is saying, one nation under God, indivisible,天地，justice terrible.
We're mixing the nations.
Any conflicts of interest, comments? Can it be approved as written? Reading of minutes.
October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Dave Mulbauer chair presiding, members present for Schultz, Dozart, Mulbauer, Hyden, and Rosberg. Minutes of the previous meeting read and approved on motion. The board recognized claims for public health and approved claim to all other departments. The board approved the sheriff's office quarterly report for July twenty five through September twenty five. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart, to approve the purchase of granular road maintenance gravel from Alex Materials, forty thousand ton from Anthem Pit at nine ninety-eight a ton and ten thousand ton from Wall Lake Pit at nine forty-five a ton for the twenty twenty-six application. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Rosberg, to approve the letter of understanding from Muffell and Kind, auditing for, motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Hyden, seconded by Rosberg, to approve the estimate for snow removal for the courthouse against CCC S building from Vasco's Construction. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Rosberg, to approve following resolution, twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine appropriating to departments in the amount of four hundred twenty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars to the emergency management department. Voting I, Schultz, Dozart, Mulbauer, Hyden, and Rosberg, motion passed unanimously. On motion duly seconded, Board adjourned at ten fifty-four AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
Any comments, corrections? Thirty-nine minutes, the new approved. Thank you. Super right advisor reports, Kyle.
Not too much, just got a conservation board meeting tomorrow night. Didn't have much going on last night, and then.
They do some concrete work out there, slab of concrete or something. Any help still?
Yeah.
Not that I know of, because not major anyway, I guess. Last spring they did a side of the building, they told, they should die.
Wendy, they shut down, damn it.
Uh, I think the water, the water's, no, sure. They can soak camp, just.
I'm doing.
Yeah, they call it water, so. Just looking at the agenda for the storm shelter grant. They received a grant for the storm shelter.
Will that be about the campgrounds?
I would hope so.
Which one?
The bottom way, the upper way, the new bathhouse, I think is sort of ready.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it. Uh, do you guys see the voting ones? Up for our high side priorities, Jeff, it's, do you have those emails tied?
Yep.
I think votes.
Yeah, I can actually pull on, just looking at. Legislative priorities, last chance vote, I've already voted, basically it's where you put your priority list.
Yeah.
October thirtieth, when I got that email.
It don't take too long, five, ten minutes.
No, it don't take long at all. Um, recorders kicking everybody's butt. People were done as their part, because some of them are gonna. Online voting, it just says we don't like. Still look like a real impressive number, so.
It's always a hard one to get people to.
You know, though, we've got three to five times the numbers of, and we've, like, recorders about sixty-two, that's a percentage or numbers? Let's just say it's numbers, it might be percentages, but, and we're at thirty-six. Auditors, you're at thirty-seven. You ain't taking much but right now, either. Of course, compared to us, you're blowing it out of the bars, you're the doubters. Yeah, we're the five.
I mean, I said, I team meeting coming out next week, go over that RFP and what we're gonna do with the new system.
Okay.
So people will have more information on that, and then the following, like, I do have, it's gotta be a good point for, maybe square, executive board being.
I feel like a contact, like officials, get them done, with the date till seventeen December.
Matt has torn awake.
Yeah, I was trying to drag to my feet, because, is it Elton, Burton, it's a supervisor up in Duna, he said he might have a better location for us.
Oh, really?
But I haven't heard back from him, I seen him. Not sure how to do an extension state, I rushed out of there, because I had eighty I had to get to. Anyway, I'm just gonna.
Well, that'll be here before we know it, too.
I know I'll ski the dark like he'll come. Jason came to one, but then we all kinda got crappy at him that day.
Like, called.
Kinda chewed us out.
He called us twenty-eight.
My early childhood meeting was canceled Wednesday because that was six, so it's been postponed until the twelfth, so we'll do that. But one of the things that I've been concerned about is our program, should the federal shutdown? So Wendy has sent me a text, kinda given me an update on how everything's gonna, I had that up here, but, but I did see where Trump is possibly, uh, dated to, uh, one half of this nap program, which will give her about sixty percent of what they normally get in November, it's what, word on the code is, but Wendy is saying that, which is, which is mostly good news, I'm just gonna run through it here quick. Yeah, yeah, sorry. Uh, the update is that they, uh, they've got good news on the child and adult care program, it'll continue to reimburse childcare home providers with nothing November, and C A C F P staff can continue to work as normal. Head start program is to continue to provide services to families, as our contract doesn't end until January thirty-first, and so that shutdown has affected a hundred and forty head start grantees nationwide, eleven October, November grant start date, so that was bad for them. Snap benefits will not be issued for November, which will put an added strain on local food pantries, and they've been receiving a lot of calls, uh, they continue to take applications for the low income home energy program to get us through part of December, the state is providing additional dollars to the agencies, so. I talked to Louise then today about how her tap bank is going and how we're doing that, and she said, well, we're doing pretty good, and just gonna have to see how things go. What we were thinking about possibly doing is maybe putting some boxes around different places for people to do extra things in this time, and so I think, so, but I think we're considering maybe doing that.
How many federal employees do we have around here, just like?
Uh, I don't know for sure. I do know that a relative of mine, for NASA, is.
Doesn't affect anything for Louise, does it?
So, I'm sorry.
No, I don't think they're trying to affect veterans, veterans, like, government graders at the planes.
Oh, like USDA?
Yeah, yeah. So I just thought it was good to have an update locally, how things are being affected.
Yeah, shut down those classes, and I'd be banned, so we'll take it here, that's some help.
That's for smart thing.
Eventually it will affect us, I think filling up our food banks, to get that done. What, what would we have to do if we wanted to put in a box here at the courthouse for people to put extra things, was happening.
What about, we got room up by the front door, they'll throw a box, we could put one by the east door, because it's accessible. We just need it signed, it needs to be, have signage on it, so people understand that it's going to the tap, or local tap, or whatever.
I just, you know, you're gonna ask me to be one of them. That's about it.
Well, we were gonna start popping popcorn for the Christmas crusade, because they're starting that, um, Chief Trejo was on the radio recently, and it's like that's gonna be going, too, so. Yeah, maybe we do a combined effort, we, we talked about doing some extra popcorn this month to get ready for that, but we could include tap in that.
You mix up the flyers, I'll run them to the banks in different places, and they can't make it.
Yeah, they're expensive. Just gotta keep ours on.
We've got those pre-accupage situations, so can't even screw it up, so. We can still burn it.
All good.
Or a few more guys.
Let us know some days you can do it, and we'll get some days too.
We have enough reasons for me in our communities, it seems. I don't know if anybody's annoyed by this, it's just where we can't behave like adults in certain places within our community.
It's very unfortunate. And it's hurting them.
Yeah, but, well, the people that are getting hurt.
But there's good news along with it, that, you know, this goes on to December.
Yeah.
Right.
This goes on through December. I'll be up there, and I might be their favorite visit. I'm sure there ain't much I can really do, but I still, I could, I could correct.
Take a look, Steve.
And go back to, once I get the most down, or if local, just give us the authority and the funds to do it, leave, get out of our hair.
On my way in this morning, I was thinking about that, but, you know, local government is still the glue that holds this whole damn thing together. You know, whether it's the cities, us, we're the ones that gotta react to all the crises. When you have a real crisis, or tornado hits or something, people come together fantastic. But self-inflicted crises, like this, this bites me on the side.
Something about our community, though, we put out the deed.
Yes, they're good, they're good. I mean, most of our rural, rural America's always been good, looking after them, so I guess that's why we like.
Fill up some boxes, make sure that pantry doesn't.
Yeah, that's the thing, is, right now, created the whole new area of deed, it's gonna bleed our reserves of, right, our reserves, right, well, we hope not, but I mean, there's communities, it will. We've got a pretty good tap program, they can pretty, pretty well supply, thanks to local factor, still. Okay, sorry, I didn't.
That was my update, which was mostly positive, but still.
We do have C D S A, we're beating some up, and getting a few emails about it. Tweeted, just wanted to join together. Go ahead, Ty.
Really have, go ahead, we. Got some stuff to see if there's stuff I needed to talk about, I mean. We had, uh, Operation Green Light coming.
Yep.
That's the week of Veterans Day, so that's next week.
That'd be nice to have the lights that we talked about, to turn on the.
I just, I think that that's something we should really, even ask around the community, see if people will be objected to us suspending that money for, because we could get the kindness.
Silver.
You know, well, yeah, we could do that, but I'm just saying, we could get the kind that changed for the different holidays, you know, we could have, through the Halloween, you could have an orange building, or a brown, or, you know, orange, do the same thing, kinda at Thanksgiving, and then Christmas, if we had red, green, we could turn it red, green, and obviously our national holiday is even red, white, blue. I just think that'd be pretty cool.
I think.
Hey, Kenny, I, I, I look at courthouses across the country now more than I ever used to, five years ago, come here, and we have a nice courthouse, I mean, it would be great to still have our dome, because when I went throughout Nebraska, our, our sister courthouse, it's a cool building. I mean, it's a majestic, but, but still, it's still a nice building. Be neat, even if we just did, for fiscal reasons, just get the, think about when you do that, like, yeah, on Memorial Day, or the Fourth of July, all the flags are out there, you know, lights are glowing on that, at the courthouse, that'd be cool, that'd be one of the prettiest courthouses in the country. But, you know, I mean, if people would think that's kind of frivolous, waste of, I mean, our children, or, if people thought that'd be a great idea, I'm sure, think that'd be a good, good thing to slip into the budget under town.
Or could we take up donations?
Not even a bad idea there? Would you, did Terry, did you look that up and see what it cost?
Yeah, Louise did.
Louise did.
Well, last week she sent, I asked her, and she kinda thought, she remembered it being twenty thousand, and she said, that's probably last week, whatever. You have twenty thousand.
Probably not a good week to ask for twenty dollar, try to figure out how to feed everybody.
Yeah.
Christmas week, when everybody's still generous, that'd be a good time.
She does have a question mark like that, so.
She wasn't real sure.
That's her, and that's kinda where I thought.
Like I said, even if we had, if we do one.
With that, I think, yeah, purchasing it, you know, getting it wired, and all sorts of different components to that.
There'd be computer stuff to it, because it, to change it.
There was a company, I remember, that's called TruLight.
Oh, yeah.
That's what they specialize in.
That's what they do.
Yeah.
And we should.
Oh, they just got, they just got the residential thing.
But a person could, you know, get just one, that you stick in the ground, that shines up, that's, that makes it hungry, temp, really, which you get up on, personally, quite love.
Right. To give us.
Give us good effect.
I'll go shopping for that, if I can find something.
Good quick fix?
Shopping, I'm way too sorry.
Go shopping, I'm sure that'll be our, our best.
I better write what I'm shopping for, it's, all right, see what I can buy.
Green light starts today. Today is when it starts, or through eleven?
I better get going.
Why, it's so deep.
We got the little ones in the front windows of the building.
Yeah, and those are not.
They are not very effective.
Yeah.
Need to find something else.
We could put green at Christmas, too, for feeling Grinch light, which is.
They have the ones that you can just push the button.
Nate doesn't hang up Glenn's, uh, Grinch deal anymore.
Anyway, uh, oh, next week, I ended up, apparently there's nobody gives speeches in here, I got two to do, two, yeah, somebody said, you know, we're not having our meeting, go have beers, and I made it up to them.
No, I dropped your name a couple times, or at least once.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, because I said no. Not a big twelve-minute speech giver.
Then all you have, is that all I have to do? It's like being older to twelve. That's my introduction.
See, I knew you were the perfect base.
You know, that's the good thing, the way I do speeches, they never ask me twice. Anyway, uh, then two weeks I fly out to DC, and I've been actually getting some really good feedback, people just calling and visiting with me, and I just tried something different this time, and posted something on Facebook that I was going out, I've been a lot of good feedback, and people have sent me some videos and stuff, good stuff, now they're trying to hook Owen, our rural action and ag committee both, he does the, he's our adapter, and he's great back, still, young, it's our last. Anyway, I've been trying to hook us up with the White House, is it, but, I think we'll at least get, maybe, we'll, at least the office staff, the secretary of ag, we're trying to get the secretary of, but, just, like, we, we get some Iowa people that are up there in the job, so I'm trying to link us up with some good stuff that way, we'll see, it's still hard to get all that stuff coordinated, but, it's good, good people up there, wanting to help them over in Eastern, and, outside. I have this fire kid, I think I know him. Is Matthew Matt's in there? Sure I recognize him, they're trying to help us get set up up there. But, we'll see. I'd like to be able to visit with the people, so that they're here, I mean, it's, because this is supervisors from all over the country that are reading our position. I just hope that our conversation, our, hopefully we're done with this CR thing, but I hate that be the dominant part of conversation, that really, you know, a lot of the other issues are being forgot, right, because we're talking about that crap. And, there's a lot of other things that we're, anyways.
Louise is on now.
Trying to eat up some block here, but. Trouble.
Go ahead, Louise on, you don't have.
Louise, are you listening?
I am, I just got here.
We were just talking about Operation Green Light, and we were still, we're still always discussing putting lights on the courthouse, you know, like, you looked up, and Jean thought you had something marked on, you thought it was gonna be about twenty thousand to do that, would that be the whole courthouse all the way around, or how's that work, do you know, or do you remember?
Um, I think the discussion was putting lights on the, from the roof pointing down toward the three doors or something in certain locations, on the three sides of the courthouse, not all four sides.
Sure.
But that was, um, Jerry Bryant would remember all that, I'm sure, he was the one that kind of put it together or worked on it.
Who was that?
Jerry Bryant, from Bryant Electric.
Good. Should we try some of the, one of the places, like, you talked about, Kyle?
We could, see if they give us a, that's about, yeah, bed, you know?
Or nest.
Trumlight, Trumlight or whatever, yep.
They're out of Omaha?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. That'd be kind, I need something to check into, I just think it'd be a good idea, I'd like to post our building, NACO's website. Kinda cool.
I can always look into it.
I'm just gonna get it on there.
It's kinda bad timing.
What's that?
That could be bad timing, too.
What's that?
Just with the cost here.
Yeah.
It's your, I got.
But, don't know if it'll get to.
I could reach out to them.
I mean, we're gonna do it this year, and it'd have to be in the budget.
We could also, Louise, are we still planning on possibly putting some boxes to help fill up the tap shelves in the courthouse, or would, would you decide, would you decide on that?
Um, yesterday, Jeff Lorenson put boxes at some of the stores, and I know Hyvee and Fairway both have their own programs going for tap right now for the month of November, um, and I can ask him to bring one to the courthouse if you guys want it, because I'm sure he would do that.
I think it'd be a good place to have, uh, you know, box, and I don't think it'd hurt anything, I know, uh, just show that we're supportive of that.
Okay, I will send him a text message and see if he'll bring one by, um, it worked out really nice, he was looking for some, if any of you know, we would like to find some, like, plastic barrels to use for when we do these things, but nobody seemed to have any, so, the canned redemption place gave him several new canned redemption boxes, those nice sturdy cardboard ones, and that's worked out really well so far, so, um, I will ask him to bring one by the courthouse. Terry, do you want him to bring it to the second floor, first floor, where would you want it?
Probably the front door.
The Spiny Bee, huh?
Inside the front door.
Plastic ones?
Okay.
Girl, just wondering how I'm gonna do with them.
Yeah, that'd be perfect for Louise.
Okay, I'll send him a text now before I forget.
I think Rick Stanley one time got that blue plastic barrel.
Pickle barrels.
Pickle barrels, yeah. Smitty Bee honey, I thought, I thought, you know, because I think their honey comes from overseas like that.
Yeah.
They get honey, they import.
Jeff reached out to the honey people, and he's on a list with them.
Okay, okay.
But I guess a lot of people are on their list for barrels.
True, I'm sure.
Those boxes will work good, I think so. Really good.
Got a spot.
Yeah, yeah, we got a lot of speed out front, and, yeah.
There's enough cans. Okay.
Okay, thanks, Louise.
Thank you, ma'am.
We do have Lorena and Gordon here, we could jump up to them.
Let's do it.
All right, you guys ready to come down?
Timing is perfect.
Is, who, Verde?
Good timing.
Perfect, thank you. Well, good morning, I think everybody know me here in Bordeaux also, and we are here for Denisom Free Press, um, to ask you, respectfully ask you if you will consider a Denisom Free Press as your newspaper for records. We have, we have a year already in the new law say that a publication with one year and pay subscribers, in county, uh, subscribers, we are eligible, at least, let me know if you don't understand what I say. So, we want to ask you to consider us for your newspaper record for, uh, anytime that you decided to do it, we are a local paper, owned by the local people, we care about community, we have more subscribers than the Denisom Free Press, we write now, I'm sorry, to the politing, we have six hundred, seven hundred and.
Do you count subscribers, I think, maybe around seven hundred and eleven as of September two?
Yes, at the September two, and if, if you saw the publication for Denisom Free Press from the politing, they have hundred and forty-four, I think, according?
I don't know that.
Um, yes, uh, yes, hundred and forty, versus, uh, we have six or nine, actually, we have subscribers, in pay subscribers, in tap, in the county, six or nine, also, we have the most sales newspaper in all the county, um, by, uh, our publication that was September four, when we published, uh, the, when we published how many, you know, what is legal to do it, and we have. Uh, we have, uh, hundred and fourteen people buy the paper versus the politing forty-four people. And that is a public, you, you know that. So, um, we love this community. We are local business with local people that you know. We, we think that you choice it, Denison Free Press for be your newspaper record or the record. You also allow people to be informed more fully that the other papers doing it. This is why we are here also to answer any questions that you like to ask.
So do you have, uh, you know, like your documentation of your subscribers? Uh, and I know we have to fill out a special form to get approved by, and I do see where the governor has changed that from, from two years to one year, so that's all good.
What we have right now is our statement of ownership that we require to publish. That, that just was, uh, the number of subscribers, not by name.
Yeah, that's
We could get it with.
Okay, but what is required in by law is, you know, to be a year, a, a subscription newspaper.
Once a week.
Yes, once a week at least.
At least fifteen weeks per year.
Yes, so I do have it if you allow me to give you this. So, sorry. Um, and we bravo, actually. So here is the politing. If my fingers work.
Thank you.
There it goes, thank you. That is the politing and, and I, we start bringing this just for showing you and you compare, you know. And I'm going to give you now Denison Free Press.
We didn't do it with the bold last year, right?
And we just, we got one of our three.
We had a big.
We have to do two.
Or do our size or three.
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 That'd be great.
The county.
And this is where the governor sign page two and it's day two years, one year.
And we always said that at the first meeting of every year.
Timing is good.
So, um, there that we are, we are asking every board in town, we, we want to, you know, um, we need, we need you guys as a business also, and we need every board in our county. But of the most, we need to inform people, the, for local.
I agree, and everybody has the internet. So, you know, they say you could get it up here and everybody wants to do it that way. They like newspapers.
Thank you so much for your time and your consideration. And if you have more questions, yeah.
It's amazing how far you've come with your paper.
Amazing. Now we are able to do it with a very dedicated person, Porto.
I see him everywhere.
He, yeah, he is the soul of that paper.
There we go.
But, no, this is good timing. Like I said, we'll get into budgeting and we'll, our first meeting of the year is when we set our papers and we can discuss it further and vote on it then.
Is there a form we have to fill out something out there?
Um, no, we usually get a letter or something, but, and you can present a letter, they but this meeting is not, not for me, but it's up to the board if they want something.
I need in January.
Right.
Specific form.
No, there's not a form.
Typically a letter is requesting that.
Yeah, just to be considered as a official county paper.
You need to look at subscribers.
No.
No, just a number.
Just basically.
And we can, we'll
Yeah.
In January, you may have more if you want to let us know.
Yeah, you may have more by then if you wanna, maybe if you don't wanna import that.
And say we have nine thousand.
Exactly.
That would be fantastic for everybody, so.
Thank you, and I would like to make correction. Um, then we are really good team, you know, when, uh, just I said about how far we are. Uh, Dan Mount, Gordon, and myself, we are here to serve you guys to the community, to the community.
My God, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lorena.
But to see you too, and I going to come back.
Hopefully we'll ask
Sometime in Gordon, I mean, if you do send a letter, just do it in December. Yeah, do it in December, so that way we have it for the first meeting and
Right.
we'll put all those together for the board to decide.
Okay.
What's that?
We meet on Friday the second.
I
Set for cash count?
It will be, I don't know, don't ask me that.
But yeah. We get that letter by end of the summer.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And the December's perfect.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thanks for this.
Yeah, that's nice. You know. Right? It's good. Uh, you, you got, well, not quite, it's want to call them. Or it's gonna be longer than that. Oh, cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could jump to that before Ben gets here. Stephanie?
Yes.
Yeah, come. Yeah, come up to the table.
We can reach you.
I mean, without we jump up to you, we got our engineer coming at nine forty-five, so.
Yes, yes.
We keep moving.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Yeah, it's very very long. Morning.
Good morning.
Glory.
Oh, my goodness. All right, so here's a card from Casa. Um, this is for you and your board. Yes, sure, absolutely. Something different. Is, oh, excuse me, is there one right there?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get that one.
Great.
And there you go, you're welcome.
So, good morning, everyone. Um, again, my name is Stephanie Henrich. I'm the executive director for Casa. Um, and we come to you again, uh, with funding for fiscal year twenty-seven. Um, you know, it's hard to believe that we're already asking for money for next year, um, when we're just beginning our fiscal year already. Um, it has been a rough patch in Crawford County. Something has happened and, uh, changed in the last couple of years. I think Yasmin would even agree. We've seen Yasmin is your bilingual advocate, I mean, also the main advocate here, uh, for Crawford County. She also lives here in Dennison. And I can tell you that she has been mighty busy. We've seen forty clients in the last year, but I can tell you forty clients, that's a lot of clients for sexual assault. And I can tell you there's a lot more than that. That just means that we need to do better outreach. We need more funding or another Yasmin to help, um, in this county. The hardest part is the money. We just don't. Um, and I think that's everybody's, uh, uh, thing right now is we're doing the best that we can, I feel. Right now, we're getting five hundred and ninety-five thousand from, uh, C-Ban with your Volca SaaS in state. Well, you know, most of that is going to my salary is a five hundred and one thousand dollars. That's a there's not enough money in that to breathe when it comes to, uh, anything else. That client assistance is almost the most important thing to me. Uh, making sure, you know, you take your average of forty clients that we saw last year, if you even had to give them rent, maybe relocation for five clients, there's your five thousand dollars already. We're still asking for five thousand dollars for next year for fiscal twenty-seven. Um, and I think that is a substantial amount to help us with, uh, mileage, to help with the best that we can with even a deposit once in a while. Um, or even groceries, or to help them relocate, which sometimes crime victims compensation helps with a thousand dollars relocation. Maybe we can help with the deposit instead. Helping and having av- advocates more than just Yasmin is probably one of the biggest problems we're having. Um, you know, I recently had a meeting, we call this Hub Two. Um, and with Teresa, uh, Yasmin and Katie, and the one thing that we're finding is we need a part-time employee down here. We need somebody else to take, you know, would you agree that secondary victims, you know, when you get a client that is sexually assaulted and a lot of times right now we are seeing children all over being sexually assaulted and the phone, the home is affected. The parents, the children inside of the home, um, and then all more things come out in these cases of more children are being sexually assaulted. There's not enough advocates to go around right now. And that is something that we're struggling with, but I think we're doing the best that we can with what we have. We, we thank Crawford County for helping us this fiscal year twenty, uh, twenty-six. Um, who's Terry?
I am.
Hi, it's nice to just see you in person. Yes, nice to
Yeah, I'm working on that. We're trying to get that twenty-eighty finished, so. I mean, the county attorney's a busy human being.
Right, right, you know, and that's all hard. So it's really nice to have the funding back from Crawford County. Um, and is there any questions that I can do?
So where is Yasmin located? How, you know, just kind of we'll take a child, do they find that out through the school or how do they, you know, get connected, the forty individuals that we've been able, just roughly, how would that, what would that look like?
Well, first of all, Yasmin's, uh, office is in Carroll.
Okay.
Um, right by
Um, what is it, Highway Street?
Yeah. The sunny, what is that corner of?
It's like a
Coffee store.
Yeah, but though.
I know where it is. Yeah, yeah, and that's where they're, where she's located at. And Yasmin, how do you get in contact here in Crawford County?
Generally, you know, what would they?
Um, referrals, I mean, I've got the county assistant, she's refers me some, um, so it's like a very, we've had from the high school superintendent referrals. We also, I mean, get called out here at the hospital.
Okay.
So it just varies, you know, like coming, I know Johnny, the, um, like the wellness coordinator, she refers them a lot to me too by, you know, and stuff like that. So that's how we work together.
Okay, that, that, those are resources I didn't think about.
Yes, the only thing is Crawford County does not have any nurses in your hospital.
Because it's such a hard subject to even talk about.
Right.
And to find the person that needs you, uh, it, it takes somebody to know who you have to talk to. Uh, so do we have brochures in the schools?
All are. I, you know, it's in it, this is that time of the year where you're talking to advocates, like how many schools are we getting into? Who are we talking to? You know, the biggest thing right now, if you see, is the grid shock that everybody's showing. How do we get into more schools to show them? How do we make them understand that human trafficking also is connected with the sexual assault? You know, the kids, but recently I heard, you know, well, my kid, you know, has a boyfriend online. Well, what's his last name? Well, I don't know. Those are the kind of things that you're seeing with now even the teenagers of the problems that we're seeing. I can see, tell you that I have been here for almost eight years and I have never seen so many kids sexual assaults within the families than I've seen in the last two. Uh, you know, we need to educate our students and we need to educate the parents that have them or the guardians. If you can't reach the parents and we're not doing our job. And so I encourage you to, as board members, to talk to your schools. Let them, let us, you know, in region one, you've got FCC, you've got Casa, you've got Safe Place, all of us, we need to be in their schools talking.
But it's such a hard thing to talk about and so much of the time people don't believe.
And, yeah, you have to believe. I don't want you to have to come to me and say I should have believed. And, you know, now I have a grandson or a grandchild and they need my help or, you know, we don't, we don't want that. And we can't prevent that, but we can we can absolutely help your students, your, your people, your individuals here, because adults get sexually assaulted also, and we see that a lot. Um, and it's not just children that we're seeing, we're seeing men and women, we're seeing, uh, boys and girls, it doesn't matter. Um, we're seeing it and we're seeing it across the board of nineteen counties that we cover.
When do you attribute the address?
And ed- education, social media, um, it, you know, they, the eight-year-old, uh, is walking down the street with a cell phone now. That cell phone, I can tell you, I have a two and a half-year-old granddaughter that can run a phone.
Making use of our IT
Yeah.
to get after
Yeah.
the youngster.
Right. You know, little kids can use a, a phone better than I can.
Absolutely.
And, uh, like I said, they know, my, my granddaughter knows where Netflix is right away on my phone. But she's two and a half.
Yep.
So imagine an eight-year-old that can get into mom and dad's stuff. Oh, yeah, they can get in. And so the contributor is, for one, we're not teaching them enough about the phone systems, about the internet. It doesn't matter how smart they are, they're smarter. And there is a fifty-year-old, sixty-year-old man behind every single website and game that they're playing, and that is how they're getting their youth. And it's not just men. Women sexually assault men. And we're seeing that now too, especially in the northern part of Iowa is, is what we're seeing for men getting sexually assaulted. People think, well, that doesn't happen. Yes, it does. It does power and control is everything. And that is what we're seeing across the board. And, you know, I want to be able to help everybody I can. And even if I don't have the funding to help them, I can give them the resources to help them. And that's what we're trying to do. That's why we have, you know, advocates like Yasmin. Um, it, it's a great thing and the more we can put people into your county, the better. I have Teresa coming in. Um, I'm hoping Katie, she is our new Buena Vista Poki Ida Manona in Cherokee. She's gonna come in and help Yasmin too. So you basically have, you know, three different advocates coming in constantly into this county.
So how do you, how do you combat this though? I mean, I, I'm perplexed. I mean, the kids obviously are smart enough to get on the websites. I mean, what, what, what are, what are we supposed to be teaching them?
Teaching them how and what is behind those websites. If, if we don't get into schools to talk to them
Yeah.
and, and do age-appropriate, we're not coming in and saying, hey, let's talk about sex. We're talking about how do you protect yourselves? So we're, we're going from kindergarten all the way to twelfth grade.
So these people basically try to get them, they need them somewhere on the high abductive kind of deal.
For sure.
Send pictures.
Send pictures, news. You, you wouldn't believe fourteen-year-olds sending new pictures to their boyfriends. And then you find out the boyfriend's on the internet, but they don't even know his last name. You know, Facebook dating, Snapchat is the biggest problem right now in our world. They should get rid of it all, altogether. You know, it's funny when you get to talk to parents and you tell them, do you, do you see the eyes only on Snapchat? They're like, what is that? Like, oh, that's where they can hide the pictures, even though you're on your Snapchat as a parent. So not only that, you teach the parents what to look for. So there is more.
That's probably something you really gotta do.
Right, right. And, but the thing is, you gotta get them to come to the meeting. You gotta get them to just get off their phone and care about what's happening to the kids.
Hiding in plain sight.
The school's been pretty open to let me come in.
No.
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 Why?
Uh, we're talking about sex, you know, it's not anything about the schools. It's scary too. You know, if you put a table in front of, uh, everybody and there's a big thing going on downtown and you got Casa right there, how many people you think coming under our table? Nobody, nobody wants to. Nobody wants to talk about what's there. You know, we talk about human trafficking. Human trafficking is huge right now, but so sexual assault, it all combines together. And if we all work together and the community opens up and says, I'm gonna take charge and I want to do better, then things will get better. But if we hide behind saying it doesn't happen, well, then we'll keep on doing what we're doing. I, I, I hope someday I get ran out of my job and everything's perfect, but until then, I'm gonna make sure every child that I meet, every person I meet knows what's going on. I'm a mother of a child of sexual assault. She's twenty-seven now. And at seven years old, she was sexually assaulted and she had no advocate. And I came eight years ago, not trying to be the executive director, I came as an advocate to help. And here I am now, but I want to make sure somebody always has Yasmin. Somebody always has that person. Because if they would, maybe my daughter would be so scared to have somebody take care of her kids. She doesn't have a job, she works inside of the home. The, the boyfriend works outside of the home to take care of the family. We see that if they don't have an advocate, then they don't get to heal as well as they should have. And that's why we're here today to ask for the funding to help continue to have the services in your county because it's needed. And it's gonna grow more.
You know, probably you too. I mean, I, I've done a lot of stuff, because he has one juvenile detention center and I have the other. And a lot of times these kids are on, what, whether they go into drug abuse or they start becoming violent or, you know,
Right.
basically aggravated type children. You know, it usually stems from an early childhood trauma. These are the types of things that stem, that stem.
Right, I mean.
You know what I mean? So we're really not just, I mean, we're fixing a problem for that person, but we're fixing a problem for society down the road if we actually get while you got a big family.
That, that is correct. And, you know, we always say, like, say you get a family of three kids and two are sexually assaulted by the individual inside of the home at the time. I always look past and say, well, somebody hurt that child. They don't make them perpetrators, but they cut it what they see in the day. And, and that's the thing, we've got to fix the, the homes that we're seeing this in. And we've got to get into the schools. So I'd love to see you be proactive and tell them, like, you know, get us in there. The more we can talk to the kids, the more hopefully we have, maybe the new thing I'm starting is getting a parent meeting in the county so we can talk to the parents, not to scare them, to educate them. Because there is, there's worries out there and the more highly educated we get, the better we are to control our kids and grandkids. Let's try to do that. I hope so. Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I'll be happy to figure it out.
Wonderful. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, man.
Your turn.
Okay.
Imagine. You're not beating out. What's that bridge doing?
I'm doing good. The concrete is bored. So that's the. Not the bridge itself, the, and uh it approaches, they fixed one, they approached yesterday. So uh, so yes, uh right now, what they've got left is a, a little bit of shoulder work along the, the pavements. Uh the pavement markings, a little bit of a, you know, mind shaping and uh, uh some temporary seating uh for, to, to kind of, just a. Temporary seating that they'll come back, will have to have, come back next year to do a permanent seating on that. They're just gonna put something down there to try to control a little bit falling. But uh. And, and run some of the. I don't know what you call it, the, the straw bales, the tubes, you know, try and control some of the.
Erosion.
Right, right. Uh some of that work, uh, uh, a little bit of riprap placement. I, I visited with them yesterday, we did a walkthrough of the bridge and uh. And just, basically a final walkthrough, make sure that, you know, we don't see anything that needs to be, be addressed before they kind of. Basically signing off on the structure.
When they, like you talked about them placing riprap, is that part of their contractor, is that riprap we're providing or? And if, if it's theirs, is that riprap that meets our standard?
We did specify plans that, uh, we, we wanted the riprap, riprap to be of court site material. Uh, a lot of times when we do our oil products, we, we, we incorporated the plans that we will provide and, you know, the riprap for the project. This being a city, having city funding, you know, we would not be getting reimbursement for that, you know. Just will have that money going towards the riprap portion of the project too. So, but we still wanted that, you know, that super courtside, or not super courtside, court site material. Uh, uh incorporated in the project, it's just that much better underneath our bridges, so uh that was. But they did, they did truck it in, they, they placed it, that's, that's interesting. Um, but yeah, looks good. They just had, had some areas that were, the fabric was exposed, they need to uh. Kind of shit things around and, and get it covered up and uh, and uh. Some little bit of minor crowding on the column, the structural elements of the, of the project. Other than that, uh, it's coming to a.
When can we drive on?
You know I'm gonna ask, right?
Um, well, that depends on when they're done, so I, I.
All right, I can ask it someday.
They, I, I have to look at what they have left of working days, but uh, I, by the end of the month, should be driver.
Do ribbon cuttings or something.
But it'll be soon, uh, they said that they shouldn't have to get outside their working days.
It's moving along nicely.
It is, uh, like I said, it's a, a, a lot of minor stuff, but you, you don't wanna open it up until they're done and uh, and uh. And we do have a little bit of work that we wanna do coming up on the approach. I don't think we, we would hold up, opening up the bridge for, for that little bit, but uh. You know, that, that side road, but uh, so we, we probably get it opened up and then do that, so. So yeah, that's.
Still to go the other, I guess.
Uh, like I said, last week we did a walk through, just kind of went out some things that we wanted addressed before, before they're able to walk away. And uh, when I meet here, I'm gonna go over there and make sure those little things are being addressed, uh, there's minor crowding. Cosmetic things that would want on.
Location.
Some, some rebar pulled out. Things of that nature, you know, then before they're able to just walk away from the project, you're cleaning it up.
Let us know when.
You betcha. Uh, our bridge crew, uh, there's still on two hundred and thirty street, they got about a week up there, yeah, I think I said that last week. They keep finding more to do, so, and um. Uh, they're gonna, like I said, finish up that project, do a little bit out of that intersection. And they're probably gonna be moving down to do a little bit of shaping on our county property there. And uh, and uh, by uh, the. The Westside Crew is going to uh be doing some fencing around our, our county property after, after we're just leaving, so.
Are we putting a chain link around that or what are we doing?
Just, uh, just, just uh barbed wire.
Yeah, cause they run a cap on that one.
Right, right. We'll do uh, we'll, we'll do steel, you know, ultimate, uh, and uh. Four or five, barbed. We'll find, find some barbed wire.
I went by a place yesterday, that's coming up through Kansas. I had, I had to slow way down to count, there was eight strands. So what are they trying to keep coyotes out or what? That was a lot of strands.
That's a lot.
I know, I thought I'd get by around my property with a four barbed and I'm gonna go put a fifth one on. So, I would do five, yeah, if there's gonna be cattle, I don't want issues with.
Especially cattle stretching it.
Yeah.
But our guys are gonna do the fencing, uh, and uh, I, we got, we got the ban pile, we can, we're gonna run for the fence. Bridge crew, uh, they're, they're gonna be finishing up patching today down on uh, by after uh. Uh, South of Manila there on that mile of pavement there. That really needed it, uh, aside from that, I think we're done patching on the pavements for the year and then they'll move, move up to. Two hundred and thirtieth where they are grading, they got a pipe to put in up there. Then they'll be moving to. Uh, probably the, uh, veil bridge and fix up that side road, just a lot of little, you know, odds and ends things that'll kind of be shipped around, kind of finishing up. Uh, basically, it's end of year stuff, just try to get the little things accomplished that we know we wanna get done before winter and uh. And uh, and wrapping little things up, so, uh, like I said, I think that project up there on two thirty, be our last grading project. Uh, the bridge crew, they, you know, they got little things and then uh, they probably, they do. We'll, we'll keep going until the weather stops us, we got little things. Bridge up on. I knew we want. Put some. They got a lot of things that they can just start on and if we just get. Everything's got in the way, but. He has me speaking. I didn't crush. Pile down at the dome there. Fine.
Other crisis team that will come and to access the ASL or us, they kind of figure out where it goes. You can still call 988 and that's like the national crisis number for mental health is that 988. And if you're calling that line, they will connect you with who needs to come, whether it's the Iowa PCA, whether it's a crisis team, whether it's connecting to us for ongoing needs for a little bit of full.
It worked better in the B.
Um, I've been called the VAs, I don't know, but yes, I mean, I've had, I've been connected with someone who called 988. For the specific example was her food stamps, her SNAP benefit card wasn't working and she wasn't sure why. And she was in crisis, but she needed food. So she called the 988 number and they kind of de-escalated the immediate crisis. And then they sent her to us and then I continued to work with her and ended up finding out she had other needs to be met. And so they de-escalated the crisis, but still connected her to me for ongoing services. So it worked really well. I mean, it really did. And it was very, uh, so it's just getting people used to calling that 988. Cause sometimes they don't like calling like a national number. They're so used to calling their local person, which is great, but they still get connected. It's just, there's a better.
It'd be nice to, if somebody could call the number just to kind of see how it works, that that would be against the law and surely just test it out. You know, find out how long it takes, you know?
Yeah, I'm sure they test, they test them like that to see.
I'd like to test it.
You could try. Yeah.
Um, so yeah, um, but I did bring, um, some half sheets. This kind of gives you some basic information. Uh, and we're working on trying to get, uh, these are going to be printed on a nicer piece of the paper so that they can be laminated or you can put them up. But, um, it just kind of goes through the, we are underneath the umbrella of the Adrian Disability Resource Center with the state, so the A D R C. And, um, it kind of goes through, um, what we can do as a disability access point. Um, anyone can call the intake number. Um, you don't have to be in crisis. You can just call it and kind of get some information and then that person will kind of direct to on what you need immediately. And if it looks like you kind of need more care than just what she can provide over the phone, then that gets given to me. And then I assign the case, um, depending on where the person lives and they can get some options counseling. So we kind of go through where they live, what's their disability, um, what some services that they could access. And if it looks like they're going to need some like possibly long-term funding, then that's where, um, our long-term service coordination comes involved. And we kind of walk them through the paperwork and make sure that they meet all of the financial and mental health or whatever the diagnosis is criteria. And then kind of get them connected to, to services. And, um, we just recently Caitlin was involved in it where we had someone that needed kind of immediate funding, which that's what I was always worried about with the regions. We could kind of move real fairly quickly with clients when they were in crisis and needed, they were disabled. Then they did needed, um, some long-term funding immediately. And Caitlin and another newer staff, they worked really hard on a full day. Someone and got, got them completely enrolled into the system and got the funding in place. Like they were working on it like October 30th and by November 1st, um, the disability access point had them, had a note, notice of decision to the provider and had them up and going. So we can do it quickly.
Do it that quickly, but we can't do it.
One of those stories so that, uh, you can see that the system does work, that a day is, is acceptable. But will you then like, does Wesco have somebody here that reaches out? Is that kind of, is there a, uh, point person at Wesco that helps or?
It's, it's with our staff. It, yeah, it's Wesco reaches out to us and then we go out and kind of get a call rocker. So.
Yep. We just have to kind of keep making sure that we feel that we're being heard, um, these smaller. And I, I know that we have a huge need for it here in Crawford County. Those folks at the region used to take care of, are still here. And, and it concerns me that we've lost that, that human touch of who is our person.
Yeah. So if they were, yes. So if they were getting funded, funded from the re- region side, we continue to follow those clients. Um, and make sure that they're getting that funding that they need and we'll continue to follow them until they don't need, they call it the safety net funding. What used to be region funded, they call it safety net. So we'll continue to follow them until they don't need that funding anymore and try to move them. Um, you know, either where they're self-sufficient, don't need funding, or that they need, uh, maybe more long-term care if that's what they need. So.
That's reassuring, but that, you know, because it's on my mind a lot because I know what we've all been through, uh, with, for the region. And I just can't imagine that that's all gone away. Now, if anything, I think it's got worse with all the.
We are very fortunate. Like I said, we, like myself, I came from the reg- region funded system. Um, and then Caitlin and Lisa both came from the region system as well. We brought them over from Rolling Hills. So we're for- very fortunate to have them both. And then, um, I've hired two additional people in the Woodbury County. And they, um, had come from the target case management Woodbury counties. So hired a lot of staff that come from the county based system. So, um, they're very much, um, want that, that local access for people too. So, yeah.
And remember how we used to do it.
Yeah. Yes. And so, yeah.
And our newest staff is only like, she's in Erling, but she's pretty close. I mean, she's closer than I am even. And I will say from my experience, like going from region to the disability access point, I actually think I've seen clients more often. There's more requirements. So it might take a little longer because there's more paperwork. But I think there are like more requirements, which is a good thing because people are being seen and followed up with on more of a policy basis to make sure that, that it's not falling, falling through the cracks.
Needed to hear the positive side of all of this.
It has been, truly.
Wrong. Uh, I don't know. Uh, you know, we go to ISAC and, uh, this Garfield would just, we, there were never any answers ever. This is the way it's going to go. It's to be determined was every, every step of the way to be determined. And yeah, way into it, we still.
There are other communities that have like, or Wesco, I mean, we were pretty proud of Wesco. Yeah, they are. Team are just painting.
Yeah.
Are they kind of like a national showcase thing? I mean, cause it looks to me like they couldn't.
Well, they're kind of going to be moving into Shelby County.
And their, their clients are, they, they immigrate or integrated with the community so well.
Yes. Yeah. I mean, every county has really great providers. We're not supposed to have favorites, but I always tell people like Wesco really truly is one of my favorites. They're really great. You guys definitely have a reason to be proud of them. And they're so involved in the community is good. But a lot of townies have great providers too, but they are.
Discounting anybody. I just wondered if they were.
No, they're, they're.
They sure seem like, I mean, you know, obviously they're, they're ours.
Yes. And they work really great with us. They've been giving us office space that we can be here in Dennis and helping locally. You know, cause I can work from my house, but it's so much more personal to be here and work with them. And they provide the office page, space, which is amazing. If people call in, I mean, if they call a random community member, everybody knows Wesco. So they just say, call Wesco for help and they immediately connect them to us and give us the resources to meet with them there, which is really great. And they get people in very quickly. So they've been wonderful to work with and very adapting of working with us. So at least.
Their number doesn't get better either. Continue to work.
So that's our.
Thank you. I want to hear that.
Yeah.
There's your break.
So yeah, that kind of our goal is to kind of work with the counties and work with the providers that are within, um, within those counties. So that they know to reach out to us. Cause we all know that usually it's the providers within each county is where people have a tendency to go first when they need services. And so just making sure like the Wesco, we had worked with New Hope Village and then Hope Haven. Um, we work with Goodwill Industries and Sioux City. So just, you know, kind of where those people nat- naturally kind of navigate that have disabilities. We've been trying to work really closely with them so that they know that we're here for them and that they can call us at any time and we'll try to help people that need it. So.
Okay. Listen, thank you for coming.
So if you have any questions, feel free to, to call me. I'll come back up here and talk more if you need me to, to give you an update on how things are going. And, um, if you need me to, I can just all bring, um, Iowa PCA with me.
Anytime. Yeah. We'll make time for you. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thanks for meeting.
Thanks for coming in.
I've been hitting you. I've been calling your old number and it, it lets you leave a message.
We got that taken care of. I didn't realize that that line was still open.
I've been coming and saying, well, she hasn't even called me back. I couldn't, I felt so, you know, and, and I just had to go and stick out and figure out how to get ahold of my people. And so thank you for coming.
Yeah. She will have, um, two kinds of like service navigators that will be serving Crawford County. So Caitlin, um, a little bit. And then like my new, um, person, Ashley, um, like she said, lives in Erling, so Shelby County, but that's only like 30 minutes of that.
That's not too far. Do you have a new number or?
I do have a new number. Yes.
And I, I.
Sure. Yeah.
Just in case I have a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just in case.
Well, thank you so much for meeting with us.
Yeah. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you lady. Appreciate it.
Keep up the good work.
We find them numbers out. Can we have them drawn in place? Put them in the newspaper and like a dirt?
I think that maybe I, I, Gordon should fill an article coming that, uh, we need to get that word on the front page of the paper where we're at. Finally, we kind of have a breakthrough, I think of, uh, where this is going, what it looks like. And, um.
Like every week to get a number that we want made totally.
That match.
Oh, thank you. I love the color once. All right. All right. Gosh, a lot of phone numbers here today.
Number it is.
Here and catch up. We're up to tax abatement. That was not in our packet. No, nope. It was not.
Well.
Paul, Paul.
Paul.
Better call Paul.
Paul, Paul, Paul.
It's a charter rogue.
It wasn't many series. I know where it was at.
Have they started?
In order to harvest them up there, there are some flags.
Okay. Nope. Based up forward and we're put on it.
That's where Sam leaves.
Oh, okay.
Paul, hey Dave here. Are you still downstairs? Uh, we are up to on our agenda. We have a tax abatement on it or Jason and Courtney Webb. We don't have anything on it for her in the packet. I didn't know if you could pop up quick. And it's 1186 E Avenue Charter. Okay. Thanks, Paul.
You can pull it and come up quick. So we can jump up to, uh, the Crawford County contribution of $500.
Yeah. I've got that last week.
Make a motion to approve that.
Second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We can jump down to our proclamation supporting Operation Greenlight for veterans. That was in our packet.
Are you looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion.
Oh, okay. Uh. How do we make that motion? Make a motion to?
Prove to.
Prove the proclamation for supporting Operation Greenlight or that's true.
I have a motion.
Days and the floor. Correct.
According to what I read on the internet.
Yep.
Four through the 11.
There you go.
Sounds good.
We'll be lucky to burst some green lights.
Any further discussion? Hang on. On paper, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Saying that paid attention or not paid attention. We'll have some lights by the door. We'll walk in and maybe then we can just put green light on soon. And wait.
Really? And I'm thinking, you know, we should do something up by Lisa's office. So she hasn't already put something in her.
Probably already has.
She probably already has. I shouldn't drive around at night. Okay.
Uh, we don't, that's Gordon. Good. Uh we don't, Gordon, do you have anything for citizen input? Anybody on Zoom have citizens input?
See, in some counties, they do citizen input in beginning and at the end. Because of beginning and they can talk about, you know, what they came for and at the end they had questions. I have folks that have a specific thing that did make it to the agenda that they wanted to about, then they would have to hang on.
No, with our state ECI board meetings, they do input right off the bat. So when you talk about agenda items or give the course voted on.
I think that would hurt to uh, there's some people that are just waiting for the meeting to be over so that they have some input. That was, I didn't, I can't believe that Caitlin didn't realize that that number was still going and that I'd leave her this message and it's like. It's just I want Caitlin not to call me back, so. She's not that way.
Well, it just seems like when they even say, well, if you have any crisis moments, call us and we'll try to get them directed in. They're doing the job.
And and how much, what what is their contract? How many millions of dollars are we paying them to take care of our people? We've not seen. Any of them. We had to really look under the rocks for to find out exactly what this looks like it. They still worry about that person that calls and says, hey, you know, my child is going through this. Who do I call? And I got these numbers, so that's how I answer that. I didn't have that until today.
But you think that taking a contract on like that, it would be right off the bat. Every single board supervisor, every public health. Every each.
Yes, courage to get word out and make sure we have a base.
Their department is a lot of times who gets called. They shouldn't be talking to them.
And look how hard we worked to not have them go to the emergency room and where they're not treated properly. For the last, and we want somebody in a mental health episodes to go to jail.
Sounds like must be pretty good for each of them. You know, considering how, I don't know how to recall works for other sheriff's departments. Remember when we had the two officers? I don't know where we hit the money. How are you?
Doing well.
Good morning again.
It feels cool in here.
Were those your knees? Gosh, I bet that hurt.
You know what Grandpa always said? Feel better with a turn. He's done wrong.
Old furniture, short cable. Okay. So yeah, uh it's on our agenda to approve. We just want to make sure it met all criteria.
Well, uh you, as you noticed on the, I presume you guys all have copies of this. You have nothing.
Oh, that's what's missing out on our.
Yeah, I only brought one up. Uh I did have staff, uh I've talked about this, I think the other day I was up here between the uh. School portion of the tax of, or wait, it wasn't, no, we're being exempt from taxation. Uh we did, I heard the staff and it's on this particular application that the uh school tax is not included. And a hundred percent. You notice on the, on the form. Um that's something that the board is gonna need to update because you you realize that your abatement uh program lasts ten years. And it was implemented in two thousand and fourteen, so it's now it's it's past. I would advise the board to um. In- include wording that follows what the statute is that the uh school portion of the abatement is longer exempt from taxation. And you mentioned, I think, raising the value from a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
So should get that on the agenda to update.
I think we need to have it ready to go.
I I talked to Colin uh Friday. He is working on it right now. He I told Paul, he said, talk to Paul about just go over the hundred fifty thousand number and run it by him when he gets the resolution done.
You gotta be careful, Colin's gonna be asking for a paper today.
So call, and I'll talk to Colin here again this morning and go mention that school board portion of it to him, so he concludes that. But yeah, he is. Working on that and then there is some. We need to discuss too when he gets that down about some preview where you brought up with some of those other tax abatements and the window lease hell and and. How to make that work out legally, right?
You know, make sure it's spelled out ag is not considered, it's like said the rollbacks and everything.
Right, right. The way the way ag buildings are uh enrolled rolled into the overall ag land value, what I value for the county. It for the individual works out just fine, but the county bases are, as it is right now, whenever an egg building is constructed, it does not add value to the. To the tax base as far as every the agriculture component is concerned. It does the individual, uh but it is not to the county, it's a whole. So. I would I would advise the board not to allow abatements on ag buildings specifically. The structure dwellings is a different story.
Which brings in the whole shells like any more, or what part, how do you?
Well, we we would value those uh separately as far as this dwelling portion versus the shed portion. And we can apply the the ag building factor. That's truly what they're using the that shed area for. Uh if they're not using it for ag purposes, it's just, you know, storing there, it's like a tip of a garage or maybe. An accessory garage. I'm not gonna, that's not an ag building to me, even though it's constructed like an ag building. You have a sixteen foot sidewall. You know, it'd be, it looked like an egg building, but it it's not being used for ag purposes. I see no reason why it should receive that that ag building uh reduction.
Which then brings in the question of Ben, Ben Mitchell's. Recent deal for that, well, it's never, it's not clearly spelled out.
Same way on uh School Street, the one that we did.
And we don't wanna, I mean, we just need to advise it, clean it up better, but it's still the idea of three year tax payment is that it's kind of vice building and.
So so along with that that thought, um the three years, uh we had a gentleman come in yesterday and. He had filed much like this one, you're looking at right here. He filed an abatement and was approved in calendar year twenty-three. For construction and. He was and he misinformed or understood that uh he's going to get an abatement on his partially constructed building. And I was actually, Dwayne was in the office uh today and it's my understanding that. How this is set up in Crawford County is that the structure has to be complete for the abatement is applied. That is correct. I'm just verifying that with the board. Or the reason I asked where I came from, uh folks could apply, make an application and have have values abated. Much like this three year, a hundred percent in uh Crawford County, but if there was substantial uh construction completed. And we would add value for that first year, we would then go ahead and abate the value that was added the first year. Structure wasn't completed until the second year, so years two and three would be fully abated. The first year would be partially abated based on what they had completed. In the last year. What was abated the first year would come off and what was added in year two would stay on for that last year, so. In essence, they would have have benefit of a hundred percent abatement for three years, but it would look like. Based on, you know, the calendar, it would be drawn out for a total of four years. Yet it still would be only a hundred percent abated on that value that was added for those those first two years. Um but I just want to make sure that.
Where it was a completion. Part of that total value where it was a completion.
Uh yeah, that's how that's how this county wants to run, uh wants wants to run that program. That's why I'm just making sure.
Well, it falls into the category, that's when the voice does it, so whether, you know, we not agree that that's what we want to do it, that's what the voice.
Well, kind of like I asked you this morning, I don't know from your end of it, if it makes a difference to you. Waiting till full completion or starting it from the time they file. What is simpler and more efficient?
I would, I would make it akin to uh benefit of the property owner, honestly. You know, it's the benefit of the property owners. They could, they, it would need to be their decision first off. And maybe this would be something we could uh, you could put in in the rules, okay, that. They they make the decision. That way it's not up to us to interpret what their, what their desire is. Okay, um and if it's, if they decide that they want to wait and receive the benefit. You know, three years, a hundred percent, they could do that. If they want to have it come on immediately, as long as it meets the criteria, like right now, it's a hundred hundred thousand dollars. And I would say if they're building a structure and it total values, say it comes out, it's gonna be a hundred fifty thousand dollars. The first year is seventy-five thousand. Well, if the rules say minimum a hundred thousand dollars of 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 value. They don't get that, even though it's partially completed. They don't get that because they didn't meet the threshold of a hundred thousand dollars. Okay, they would get it the next, they would get it when it's completed and they would see it have the three years at a hundred fifty. But they wouldn't have that first year as a partial. If they selected the partial as a choice. But they didn't meet the, they didn't meet that minimum amount of money, a value added, because they did not meet that minimum, they would not receive it. They'd have to be, they would receive it once it was completed and they meant the performance of of the uh resolution.
I think the city of Dennis used to have a choice of a three year, a hundred percent or a five year graduated and.
They now, I believe, have actually a ten year. It's ten year, it's it's five, of the ten, the five, first five is a hundred percent. And then the last five are graduated.
They had choices that.
Yes, I don't know, um that's that's a, that's a very. And and Moon, and Moon, they had uh actually had three choices. Uh they had a ten year, but it started, it was started at eighty percent um of value for the abatement. Then seventy, sixty, forty, two years, forty, two years, thirty, two years, twenty.
Never a hundred.
Never a hundred. And then um the board, uh out of the jurisdiction, there was no residential abatements in Boone County. But for commercial industrial, they had a ten year as well. They also had a three year, a hundred percent and. There was a couple special they made and they were like, they graduated like uh Dennis has where the, but theirs was a four year, a hundred percent. And then uh four years that they graduated eighty, eighty, sixty, forty, twenty, you know.
I think choices are good though, I think people will try to put their own.
Yeah, and yours, new yours right now, as it is, that's something you think about doing uh as you as you redo this, updated. You can add, you can have more than one schedule. Now, I'll tell you, as far as staff is concerned, um more schedules that you offer. More difficult it becomes for group, you know, management.
We've got a really good assessor though, so I think. I I got a question for you. I got a question, like. You know, one of our biggest issues with building, like bringing in a new industry is it would be competing for the limited. Personnel that we have in the communities with the big industries, we already have, whether it's Anderson, Peterson, Smithville or Monogram. And for the housing aspect, so I mean, if you if you can use, how, is, are there any? Programs out there that use, all right, if you want to come in here, just say you had a big company that wanted to come in and just say they were in a similar. Industry to our food service industry. But if you come in and and help initiate housing area growth. I mean, is there anything out there that gives them, you know, some kind of an abatement on on a housing area? Construction deal. I mean, is there anybody doing so? Are you tracking where I'm going with this?
I I think I pick up what you're laying down.
Well, sometimes it's hard to grasp it all and there's a lot spinning.
Fire jet, but uh there's traction. The the. Short answer is no. However, there are, there are companies out there, um and and what comes to mind is a company that keeps tubes, um I'm from Wayne County originally. And there's a uh central Iowa company, I can't think of the name, they've got uh housing all over central Iowa. And they cut, they're coming into the small communities and trying to build affordable housing in those smaller communities and. That would be.
Are they doing it to rent though?
Yes, they are. That that's the, that's the 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 best answer that I would have as far as your question is concerned. And then as far as, you know, if they were to build in the city or. I guess applying tax payment on those properties, a lot of times that comes, those those projects come with um TIF. You know, TIF I built into it and, you know, you. You really don't want to abate a TIF project because that's how you're paying for the, for the services that are being, you know, laid out.
We're not typically a TIF board. We're not big on that. I just was wondering, you know, like if a company came in and said, listen, we know we're gonna need five hundred people. And to accommodate that, you'll need another twenty-five houses, just thrown up. We're willing to come in and get the, help get the waterworks to it, help build the, some of the infrastructure. You know, we'd like to have some kind of a write-off for us to make that incentive that we would like to to create for your community. To help bring in the workforce that we need without basically hindering the workforce. I mean, I know it sounds complicated.
What I'm hearing there sound like a TIF to me.
Yeah, that's what it sounds more like.
If they're wanting, if they're wanting uh assistance, you're gonna outlay.
I mean, if they would put the money up, is what I'm saying. If they would put up the money to help that project, that housing project. You know, basically. Yeah, if the industry that's building the new facility, new plant or whatever, if they were building that. You know, I mean, I I just heard when I'm at some of these meetings, sometimes I've heard other people talking about in other states. Or they're doing some projects, it sounds like that's what they're up to. I mean, I don't know about Iowa code being applicable to that. I mean, we're, we're kind of behind the curve on. Industrial development, and we really are. And I just kind of wonder if there's. Anything that you've ever heard of in Iowa. It doesn't sound like it, no. I might have to do more digging. You know, if you could have an incentive for a company to come in. All right, you're gonna need another five hundred people eventually. Most time they start only two hundred fifty to three, four hours or whatever. You know, but if you could come in and help develop a housing area, even if it's out on the county, well, for this board to deal with it, they have to deal.
Yeah. Um I would suggest actually be talking that that size of uh employment uh in a middle of business, I'd have you reach out to uh to Boone. Um and I say that because Daisy Dairy is just now coming into Boone. They're constructing uh a seven hundred million dollar facility uh in in the corporal notes of Boone. So you might reach out to uh city council or the mayor. And see what, uh I don't sure what it took to get them to come to Boone, but as I was leaving, they they had just acquired the land. And they're under construction right now of, well, project very similar to what you're talking about. I do know that um Boone, uh to get that to happen, of course, that's a, that's a state. That's a, there's a lot of players involved in that and I just, I just know what I know based on. You know, what's in what's public in the in the media and whatnot. I do know that as far as abatement is concerned, um they have baited, they agreed to a. A three year, a three year, one hundred percent abatement of increased evaluation on that property and then a twenty. It was a seventeen, it was a twenty year deal, I believe. A seventeen year, seventy-six percent. There's seventy-six or seventy-four percent abatement of value moving forward. Yeah, I never, and I've never seen one like that before. I, but that, of course, that's all, I didn't see that.
That would be, I mean, there's gonna be a lot more people come in for that.
Yeah, they're talking about, importantly, they're talking uh up to two hundred fifty people uh at, by twenty thirty-one, I think of employees.
So you want to make sure you're not killing the industry. Yeah, that's the, that's the big. That's why to me, if you could tie something in, there's a lot of these companies that are building stuff now. I mean, you gotta have something. These site selectors go, hey, what about checking Crawford? They've got some great abatement, because that's a lot of what they're looking.
They agreed to not increasing the assessed value for three years?
No, it's an abate.
And there might be just a hundred percent abatement for three years.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I like, at least my.
Then a seventy-six percent abatement for seventeen more, that sounds like you.
Yes, is, is it seventy-six?
Well, that's.
Seventy-four, seventy-six, only two. Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know.
And that would be on the new structure, that wouldn't be the ground.
Correct.
So basically, it's, it's new stuff, you're not making any money off now, but it's gonna bring in a bunch of industry, which would actually increase the size of businesses and support that industry. You know, I mean, it's, it, it sounds like you're not, where you're letting people live here for free, not really, you know, I mean, you're, you're, they're helping bring in a bunch more stuff, too.
And to your point, that is, that's only proof of some land, and there would be a hefty valuation, because that, that area was currently, uh, valued as agricultural land. And, you know, the value was suppressed because of its, you know, uh, classification, um, and it was.
Without letter code and stuff, or, yeah.
Again, with, with construction, with its owning.
Conversion, conversion to industrial use, the land value would change by the point, you know, you know, so there would be that increase. So you would get that money, yes, which is more than you were actually already getting, but even if it was the same as you already get. You know, because it was already on an industrial area, you know, then you're still gaining, you still don't lose that money, and then in, in twenty years, obviously, it's gonna give you a lot more, but I mean, even. I, I just, to me, we gotta be more creative, because that's one of the things that I'm seeing, we're just, we just aren't very appetizing.
Who's your, who's your, uh, I, I believe with that project, a lot of work was done with the, uh, area economic developers, I shouldn't, and I'm not sure, you guys, does Crawford County have an economic development? Uh, they worked in conjunction with Ames, I believe, um.
Yeah.
To get, to get that project located in.
We don't, we don't have a lot of support, and, and so we don't have a very big team.
Yeah, yeah, so, and, and again, it took, it's not just local, it's also the state as well.
And.
That being, you know, so they're, they're huge in that process.
They've got, they get, they get, they get sidetracked by the big communities, so that's the challenge, that we've got to figure out, how do we get attention here at all?
Yeah. Speaking of, speaking of.
That's a good start right there.
All right.
Matt.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Yep. And all needs criteria.
Your enter is seventy-five.
Yep.
About seventy.
Yeah, I, I, I might, I might ask that you, uh, note that in that it's not including the, uh, school portion.
Okay.
Motion approved, the tax abatement excluding the school portion.
Motion by Kyle, second by Gene. No further discussion. Carrying that all, they would say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you for coming up.
Thanks, thanks for the education.
Um, and I, may I make a, may I make a motion? Can we move the desk about? Hey, if you come down to my office.
You can lower the chair.
Yeah, we'll lower the chair for you.
They'll hurt my knees, though.
City in style or something.
Get some coffee cans.
Let her up on bricks. Um, yeah, no, the first thing I did when I got them out, like, the second day, I said, I asked Jeff, I said, is there any two look fours we can use? I literally had, had two look fours, and raised my desk, because my knees had sink problem there.
Bave your knees.
I don't know how many years this desk been here.
People were harder back then.
Yeah.
Probably do something.
I, I hit my head a lot of times, you know.
You appear to be the only human.
You do it three times, you finally learn. So I do this three times, I'll, I'll learn.
Sorry, new guy. Hey, at least I got her.
All right.
Yeah, thanks, all good, all right.
Do you need Dave to sign now?
See, there will be a couple inches off your legs.
Do you know?
Thank you. All right, you're a good idea.
I'm saying, I think they were asked to sign.
Does they need to sign your form at the bottom?
Copy, it's not the original?
Oh.
I should sign the original.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll go back down and get the original.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, we kind of got everything covered.
Yep.
By the eleven-thirty, Chair, you have something?
I do, and I'm not sure if we can talk about this now, or if it needs to be on the agenda for next week, but when I came in this morning, I had an email from the city of Dennison. Um, I sent out to Lingwood Tax notices on last Friday, thirty-first, and they got one for a property on Eighth Street South, that looks like it's the Burgess property. Uh, this was transferred in twenty-three, and the, um, tax statement Wes sent to them, somehow they missed it, and, um, they're asking if we will waive the penalty.
It's a big ask.
The penalty is twelve dollars.
Oh, twelve. To just waive the penalty?
They're just asking just to waive the penalty.
I think we ought to have it on the agenda, to make a motion, that twelve dollars.
As I open up a can of worms, everyone else is like, what, I want to waive, because I.
I would say I would be concerned about that.
That, that would be my concern, but if that. Paying to hear it, I didn't know.
I mean, I mean, nationality and not an individual.
It's a difference, what's the difference?
The, the city must have taken this property over.
They bought it. All out there, yeah. For development, so.
Generally, my rule in, in my office is no, we don't waive penalties, I may have to bring my board, but I didn't know if, because it was the city, if that made a difference, so that's why I was.
We'll have to think about that.
We'll get it on the agenda, but then for next week.
Yeah. How far the city is twelve dollars.
Thinking about, right.
Yeah.
Twelve dollars.
Twelve dollars.
And I'll probably say the same thing, like, how many is twelve dollars? But we didn't.
Possible, but, right.
I get it.
Twelve dollars.
It seemed easy until you think about it, uh. Everybody.
If public sees that in papers.
Yeah, we know, everybody will be asking.
I had, they might know, because I forgot, I missed place to.
I had work come in this morning that were very angry that they had penalties, and I still collected them.
Right.
Right, we put on the agenda next week and, uh, go over there.
My thanks for bringing the idea, it's just a time to think.
Well, we should consider putting ballproof glass.
We got a little bit of time between our next item, so let's take a little recess, until then, I'm gonna go talk to Colin about that abatement, right?
If I had to buy a car, get six dollars.
You're a dollar. We're gonna pay half their bill?
No, I have to get a duplicate registration.
Reset for thirty-three minutes?
Yep.
Okay, we're in reset.
Yeah, and then we'll, we can get it down there.
Reset for, you go out, and I'll be there, but I suppose like.
You can be in where? Colin must go on there. You can be down there with him.
So it's sitting there.
So he'll have to have.
Why is there a portrait, uh, that picture?
Oh, I knows why.
That picture is obviously.
Come back now.
When Perry died.
Yep.
At her funeral, everybody was giving the corpse.
Oh.
And that was, it was basically everyone ended, um. And your dessert, it was.
Eat your dessert first, yep.
And, and, it was a dessert, because the best is yet to come.
Save your fort.
Save your fort.
The forks, I grabbed it to have in here.
That's cool.
Because I thought, well, in Crawford County, they gotta keep working.
That's cool.
Depending on her. I can't, but you know.
Yeah.
That is, because I thought that was a pretty good saying.
Yep.
The best.
Hey, at first I looked, it's a, is that a light reflection?